All right, we will get started. I'll call the Town of Wellseric zoning commission meeting for Wednesday, January sixth, two thousand twenty five. The caller, roll call is myself, Mark Eldorella Chair, Jerry Lewis Vice Chair, John Henry Secretary, regular commission members Bob Freeman and Laura Gray. Alternate members in attendance are Michael Kelly and Casey Hand. We also have our sitting in for Joanne Galley, our recording clerk Sarah McCawiki, and our CEO Officer Chris Costa. We have nine persons in the audience and seven online. Regular business, the minutes from our last meeting of Monday, December second, two thousand twenty four. Is there a motion to accept? I'm going to approve the minutes of Monday, December second, two thousand twenty four as present.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Is there any discussion, corrections, additions? Not hearing any, we move to approval. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero. And of course, I'm. Okay, I'm gonna make a agenda adjustment and move C, which is elections of the officers, to the end of the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Thank you. Preliminary discussions. A, Peekaboo Play Cafe, one eighteen Main Street, Assessors Map thirty seven, lot one oh four, Business B one District Pedestrian Node, applicant Maria Rap, and the actions determine if use is retail or a food and beverage establishment. Maria?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome to come up and any others in your group.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us. So I guess just to get started, just to give you a little overall of what exactly we're looking for. We will be a family-friendly establishment where about eighty percent of our space is used as a big play area. So when you walk in, you'll walk into a small portion of the cafe area where we'll have some coffee and some mixed beverages for children. For example, like Sprite and cranberry juice with a little gummy inside to make them feel special and some coffee and other light beverages for parents. The idea there is they will have a space where parents can come and speak to each other, do some work while there is a very large play area right behind that. The play area takes about eighty percent of the space. The cafe takes about twenty percent of the space and is made up of just a few small tables and a counter. The play area when you walk in will be an imaginative play space. So what we're visioning is something along the lines of walking to a space and seeing what looks like a small town. So there'll be structures that are, for example, a veterinary office, a town hall, a market where kids will be able to play. Um, I know a big question here was if it'll be a food and beverage establishment or more retail. Any food and beverages that we plan on selling are just gonna be prepackaged. So we have some pouches for kids. I don't know, the in thing now, apple sauces, some water bottles. The only thing that we're gonna be making on premises is coffee and those mixed beverages. We did have an idea to include some local businesses and get packaged baked goods like croissants, maybe some muffins, little things like that for parents and kids to snack on as they enjoy the play space. I'm open to any questions that I want to ramble on, but that's the intended use.
Are you charged for the kids to come and play there or who's paying here?
Yeah, so the fee will be, the fee will be, it's a ninety minute play session. So for each kid, you will pay per kid. And then if you want to get a beverage, you can pay extra for the beverage. But the only thing that you're paying, that you have to pay to use the space is that play area and you'll pay per child.
It's not a daycare.
We will not be taking care of children. I have my own children.
And the beverages and light snacks will be for sale?
For sale.
Of course. Even the ones provided to the children that are in the playroom?
Yes, those will be for sale.
And the events room that you propose will be a rental?
Yep, so it'll be a small area. We have a set off area in the back. It may be split into two depending on how big we're gonna, we actually must cut it off that. But it's basically just a room like this that parents can rent out for birthday parties, pizza parties, little kid gatherings.
I have a question. So where did the parents wait while the children are playing? Do they have like a space where there's?
Yeah, so when you walk in, there's an L shaped area that we've cut off with a three foot, that we intend to cut off with a three foot wall, three to five foot wall. That just comes up about halfway. That will be that L shaped area. We'll have tables, chairs, a counter area where, you know, if someone's on their laptop, you can see right over into the kids' space. There's no spot in the play cafe that you can't stand and see children. So anywhere that you stand in that space, you can see your children the entire time. Parents are also welcome to walk into the play area as well. It's not just cut off for children. But in the event that that parent wants some space here to work on their laptop, you can sit anywhere in the play, in the cafe area and see the play space.
But the parents are responsible for their child?
Fully responsible.
They're doing.
Yes. Yep.
Would there be any, any walk-ins off the street that are not, deny kids that would want the food service, the beverage and?
So, yeah, so honestly, I think most of our clientele will be for the play cafe. I would love to think that I'm gonna make such a good coffee that someone might stop in and want to grab the coffee and go. But I think most of our clientele will be for the play area and just the drink is the, you know, keeping mom here for an hour and a half sip on a coffee.
Do you foresee any plans for outdoor?
No, not at this time, no.
Okay. And did you say earlier you thought the food cafe was about twenty percent?
Space, space wise, right, space wise, it's probably about twenty percent to eighty percent play area. Granted, it's just one big open room. So no matter where you are, it looks like one big open room cut off by a three foot wall.
So there will be a small division between the cafe and the play area?
Yep, there will be.
And what do you foresee the beverage snack percentage of your overall business? Percentage, if you could even estimate that?
If we've tried to put an estimate on it, granted, this is a very new concept. But it is going to be ancillary to the play area. So I would say if we have, you know, to put a percentage on it, maybe at a reservation period or by the day. I would say by the day, we'll probably have twenty to thirty percent sold to the amount of people that come in just to play. And just assuming the fact that if I was sitting there for an hour and a half, the chances are that I'm probably gonna grab either a water bottle or some sort of drink while I watch my kids play.
I didn't see, unless I can read everything, your hours of operation?
So our intended hours of operation, we're working off of the school schedule. So we wanted to be open for one session after Goodwin got out, because Goodwin is the latest school. So we'd probably open to four thirty, five o'clock and start operations at?
Eight AM to four thirty or five o'clock?
Yeah.
Five days a week, seven days a week?
Sixty.
Sixty, so closed on Sundays?
Close on Sundays or Mondays. I think it's gonna be a
Okay.
trial and error thing, but yes.
Well, I didn't see anything in your written materials submitted. Just a heads up that we have a definition in section nine for amusement device. An amusement device is any machine that accepts monetary consideration without vending a product to the consumer, including but not limited to video games, billiard cables, carousels, roller coasters, whirling gigs, merry-go-rounds and Ferris wheels. And then in section fifty-three, amusement device is specified as no more than two are permitted for use by the public on a fee basis. And so if there's any machines for amusement devices, there's a limit of two.
I can confirm we will not have amusement devices.
Just covering the base.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I know you said that the parents are responsible for the children, but will there be staff circulating around?
Yeah, so we will have at least three staff members in the facility at a time, assuming one person is running the front cash wrap and cafe area. And then we'll have one to be going in the back monitoring and cleaning, a continuous cleaning. Because, you know, kids love to test their drinks. Yeah.
Any other questions? What do the commissioners feel as it relates to use? Question for the, would this require a special exception?
Well, that's really the question for you. Since it's kind of a food and beverage establishment, and in some cases retail. This is a unique business and that it has food and beverage, which is typically a special permit. It's got a place, playroom type of a atmosphere. You could consider a retail service.
I know.
Yeah.
Well, how is Burger King? Does they have a play area?
Well, Burger King is a restaurant.
But they also have a play area, right?
I think that's more accessory to the Burger King.
Yeah.
But I would think that the, as explained, that it's more it's unique, but it's retail within accessory of limited food and beverage to those that are utilizing the play area. But it's kind of right on the line of one or the other.
The retail sale of packaged foods, not prepared on site. Coffee is a separate, separate from that, but that would be similar to other approved uses, which are food prepackaged, comes in in a package and is sold as, as that same package. The difference is that in this case, it's primarily for consumption on site. That's more like, what's the yogurt place called? Yeah.
Frozen yogurt on Main Street.
Sweet lanas.
Sweet lanas.
But and the coffee will be beans, water, heat.
Right.
Made on site. So that's, that's not prepackaged. But so does it, how, how close does it come to a food, an indoor restaurant?
That's in section fifty-three also. Right. I don't think it comes close to a food or a restaurant.
That gets more retail.
It's, it's retail service with accommodations to parents who are there for the hour plus to be able to have something to drink or, or of course snack on at the time of the day. I don't see it as a potential large walk-in off the street, unassociated with the business model.
That's right.
Our indoor, the indoor restaurant definition includes serving people while seated, right? Is that correct? And that's not really what they're talking about, right? They're talking more about like you're grabbing your coffee at the counter and so to me, it seems that it would not, I would say it's consistent with an indoor restaurant. I don't think it's consistent with an indoor restaurant or really with any of our restaurant definitions.
It's just what's the line between food and or beverage establishment and that's?
I need if it was to increase that selection of food and beverage. That would be something different than what we're, what we're potentially looking at at the moment.
So I'm gonna leave the restaurant business to my mom on Main Street and I'm gonna take the play area to my place on Main Street. I, our intent is certainly not to become a food and beverage establishment. Our intent is simply to offer some light places for parents and kids to grab as they're running around watching our children.
Kind of as a company to what they're there for, the primary.
Right.
And that, that location of the food and beverage would be immediately when you walk in or in terms of the layout of the inside?
Yes, so when you walk in, I can provide a rough, like, we do have a rough layout to show. If you would like to see it, but basically when you walk in the door of one eighteen Main Street, you kind of walk into this chamber first and then you walk into a second door. When you walk into that second door, there'll be a counter for you to check in, you know, buy your ticket to have your kids go play. And then there's a, there's an L shaped area from the back, going all the way back to the bathroom and going all the way to the, to the wall. And it's, that just has seating for children, like couch, a couple of chairs and tables. And the same, the wall going all the way back to the bathroom has that counter so that you can sit and watch your kids directly open the counter. And I think two or three tables just lined up against the wall for you to drop your backpack and, you know, sit while your kids are playing.
Do you have a drawing, something?
I have a drawing, yeah.
You share it on the screen?
I guess, yeah, so if I log into the.
If you just join the meeting on Zoom and share the layout?
If, if you can, that's.
Yeah, no, we can definitely share it on that screen. Yeah.
Have you looked at this in terms of whether it's under section thirty-one point one permitted uses versus thirty-one point two point four daycare special exception? Is this a form of daycare?
No, I don't think it's a daycare, but that's part of the reason that we're here tonight is this isn't your normal
Right.
right establishment. You've got kids, you've got beverages.
Yeah. I'm not seeing it as a daycare. I'm not seeing it along those lines at all.
Yeah, just right. No, it's good. You gotta go through.
Oh, good question. Although you're gonna be providing snacks and beverages, are the, will the parents be allowed to bring in their own food for the kids?
So because of allergies and stuff like that, we're not gonna allow outside food and just to mitigate our, our issues because we will be a not free location. It's just simply for mitigation purposes. We don't want people to bring in, I mean, if they bring in a kid's water, that's fine, but food wise, we're not.
Is there an age restriction?
There's no restriction, but we're gearing the area for zero to six years old. But anyone's welcome. That's what we have in mind for what we're providing. That's one thing.
And there's no kitchen or cooking, so we don't have anything of that.
Not even a toaster, yeah, just a coffee machine.
If you can't pull it up there.
I think it should be, it should be drawn.
Sorry, I just read it.
No, no worries. Should be coming. I got it on my own. I just thought spotted my phone. Can I have a phone to expose? Am I up there? No.
No, I don't think it.
I can also just show you on here if you want to pass this one.
Popped up, yes.
Okay.
It's okay. Yeah, you gave us a.
I can turn this just so that you can get, because I have it up. I'll zoom in and like I hear, take the computer.
Oh, we're waiting for that commissioners. What do we see this as? What direction do we want to provide?
It's a personal service establishment with retail, prepackaged food and amusement for groups of people without there being a machine like amusement devices.
I would agree.
It's all pretty retail.
Yeah. Jerry, same?
Yes, of course.
What? So have we?
I mean, you can take this.
This is where you walk in. This is seating.
Yes.
This is just bathrooms and some more seating. That's that kind of stuff.
Okay, oh, yeah, right here.
I don't know, anybody else?
You just turn it around.
I can see it from there.
Oh, you don't have to.
Maybe I'll have the baby. So this is just the seating and this is all. Yeah, nice.
So based on the conversation before with application, if you could update the statement of use
Okay.
to include your hours and days of operation. If you could also include a printed version of your floor plan as well. And I believe that that would be something that can be handled administratively by the, by the CEO. Commissioner, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, of course, yeah.
Great.
Have any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, good luck. Thank you.
Clear discussion side of B, Santos Contracting Contractors Office, twenty to thirty outdoor display and storage areas at six Mill Rock Road East, Assessors Map forty-two, lot thirty-three, applicant Felipe Santos. And the actions determine if use is consistent with current approvals. Mr. Santos.
How are you? Good evening. Yes, what I'm proposing is at that location was the former location of Atlas Outdoor Construction, where they usually display sheds for storage. They already removed all the sheds out of the lot. And now I'm planning to propose to install like outdoor display four feet wide by eight feet tall to display like a stack material, siding material, metal roof displays. And guys, you know, small sections. And that's what I proposed. That's gonna be the office, secondary office for Santos Construction. I already have one in Stratton. And we're gonna use that location as well or, or material company, which is called Grand Composite. I use that company to manufacture a lot of the material that is not gonna be manufactured on site. That facility will be used to display the material, pretty much going to be an outdoor show. When I was talking to Christina, she was concerned about outdoor storage. I explained to her that my plan to outdoor storage is just to have small pieces of material to provide any potential customer with the material that we send. Because one thing is what they see, sometimes they wanna feel that they wanna take it home. And this is what I'm planning to do. Pretty much exactly what the previous company was doing there, only in a minor scale. It's not gonna be that crowded than the way they had it. I'm planning to do only like twenty, twenty-five displays, I guess. This is gonna be like four feet, uh, four feet wide by, similar to those.
Uh huh.
Similar to those. I had a different picture. It's gonna be twenty-five to thirty at least.
Twenty, twenty to twenty-five, yeah. And where, where on the property? Area, yeah. There's an existing shed, yes, and garage that's in the back. Yes, and that's gonna remain. That one's staying. There's also one in the front. I think there's three currently there on the property.
I think there's only one right now. There's a small one right in the corner. There's one up front by the street. Yes, it left. That one, I think, that one, I'm not sure that one is going or staying. And I have to discuss that with my recorder, because you may know him. The big one, that is the garage. That's kind of permanent. It's just been come to slap. And now what I see is removing the fencing display as well. It look like you don't want it there anymore. Chris, are you drawing this as it's gonna? I thought was going to, going to stay, but from what I can see today, they already start taking some fencing apart.
So will that modify your layout from the two?
I made that for parking space, maybe. I have like three full or construction trucks that usually if I could park there overnight, I will be, you know, putting those trucks in there to try to minimize the space for existing personal space.
And you'll be also utilizing from memory serves me right on statement of use that
Yeah.
the first floor will be your office?
The first floor is going to be like the construction office. The second floor is going to be like the material company office.
So you're taking the whole building?
Yes, we're taking the whole building.
So today, the, I guess, the twenty-four by sixteen billion?
Oh, that one's still, we're still trying to figure out what to do with that one.
That one, I found out today they're looking for a home for that.
Yes, that is what they say, remove it from the property.
To remove it completely from the property.
So the only structure that remains is the garage, this is the backboard.
That's my understanding.
That is my understanding.
So the previous approval was for a fence business with outdoor display. The bottom of the building was retail. And the second floor was office.
Pretty much. I don't consider a hundred percent retail because pretty much I'm not selling.
Well, I'm reading the previous permit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that was the approval for, was for retail on the first floor, the second floor for office. No distribution of materials, no large vehicles stored, no deliveries on site. And the first would be basically a showroom.
So you have, will you have a sales office on the first floor? And that's where you would conduct the business with people who come to look at the various types of materials to do that.
It's like sample.
And, and you're also foreseeing the first floor to the office space unassociated with retail? And then the second floor is all office?
This is the office for the construction company, for the, I'm sorry, my, my TV company.
So that's a slight difference from what was previously approved. For all retail. Right?
Right. And then the outdoor space was sheds for retail sale.
Now it's going to be displayed for?
So now do you? So now do, do people go there and bring their vehicles to go to work like at the store?
No, no, no.
So it's not?
No, it's not like a warehouse or overnight parking, no. It's just. Example, we have three vehicles on site, a rundown. You know, instead of bringing all three vehicles back to Stratford. We may take one or two and just park another one on that location.
So you're looking to store your construction vehicles, one or two.
At least one, maybe.
On a regular basis?
No, no, that is. Yes.
And is the parking location the same?
Will remain as is, I'm not planning to change anything.
So you're, 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 will be the tenant?
And this is, this is tenant.
It's a tenant.
Yes, Atlas might be car still have the lease for another two years. And he's sublisted, well. And we will see how that goes, I hope it will. But most.
So does that mean he is like tenant?
Yes. Yeah. Commissioners, questions, concerns?
It's technically outside storage, which ordinarily would require being enclosed. And yet this is the type of outside storage where with proposed landscaping. Around the perimeter. And retention of existing vegetation on the property. In what appears to be a ten-foot perimeter buffer. That fence or any other kind of screening would not serve in the additional purpose. So that it looks to me like the proposed landscaping and the existing vegetation. Would accomplish what the enclosure of the outside storage is intended to, to do. That would be under. Section nine is defined and seven point one, it mentions a setback and. And it also appears to my eye, but I'd like for confirmation in the application. That the outside storage in, as in section fifty-three in the industrial district. There's a table in here. Just twenty-five percent of the lot area can be covered with outside storage. Just by looking at this small scale plant, site plan. It looks like it would be twenty-five percent or less. So we'll look for confirmation of that in a formal application.
That is correct. Yeah, are you proposing any changes to landscaping? Will the fence that's there currently remain?
The outdoor fence, the outside street, yes. Only the display fencing inside the property. I don't know if that one is staying or he's removing those sections. It looked like, from my understanding, is gone now for now, but. That's what I proposed it to leave it there. He wants to remove it, as I said, I don't have much use for that space. Pretty much it's just going to be empty space, I guess.
This is, this is also a gateway, correct?
Well, it's in the industrial.
To town, so. You know, one of the things that, as we, as we look at this concern is that we maintain that presence. Because it is a vital corner to, to entrance of the town and exit of the town. But that fence potentially remains there as part of the landscaping.
And will remain there, because my plan is to make it even more, make it look even more attractive.
And that the display panels that you're going to have on the property are. In design and, and of such that add to the enhancement of that location and not distract from.
This is exactly the intent. Yes, and all the material that I'm using is composite material. It's not going to.
Material, talking specifically about the functionality of the displays.
Exactly.
Alright, because you have twenty, twenty-five of them. That they're, that they're done proportionally to the space that is there.
That is correct. The intent is to make it look real. If I have to shrink it down, I have more than compare with the shed kind of volume. What I'm proposing is like half the size of those big structures. Everything is going to be composite, like A-side material, skater. Something that is not going to decay, because that's the product that we try to, to sell for the volume improvement business.
These pictures are.
Those, I have those on my other location in Stratford.
Stratford, so you have same kind of thing there.
I had the same kind of thing there.
The statement of use that, oh, this is from the twenty seventeen. See, but you will provide a statement of use.
I think I see very. I think it's patient one.
What's the, what's the number of parking locations currently spaces?
I don't know.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So that will maintain.
I will change it, it won't change, I will keep it exactly as is.
And you have the site plan showing where the parking is on the display.
Yes, Christina told me she will.
I was Christina, so I didn't.
You will share the site plan, that way I can.
So that's here, that's the site plan, I didn't know it was segregated.
Yes.
This is the site plan, that's.
Yeah, that way I can pinpoint exactly where I'm planning to. To install those displays. And pretty much going to be excited on the same surrounding as the existing sheds in there. Not planning to go over, because I'll, as you said, I like, it's a gateway, I like the landscaping. And I'm trying to make it look pretty, not make it worse.
Any concerns regarding the office retail?
Like, it's less parking, I just.
Correct.
Right, this is another one, it's kind of a different use. And I think when you started, your Atlas was still gonna be on the property too at one point.
Yeah, when I started, yes, now they completely gone, yes, that was kind of. I have the restructuring.
So the use has kind of evolved a little bit since, yeah, they started.
So, so with an application, we, we needed an updated statement and. With the site plan.
And as I said, the same pretty much, same people, the same people, the same staff. Running the construction business, I'm planning to have two people there. It's the same staff that is running the material business as well on that location.
But there'll be no storage of materials or construction vehicles outside?
No.
Commissioners, any other questions?
And that's why I was concerned is you dump the construction materials, start to store them over there, you're saying no, that's fine.
Yeah, you know, as I said, I'm trying to give that place loads, you know. That's the, that's the whole point of that location.
Yeah. Will we get something like this updated, because it's from twenty seventeen? Well, if you come to back you for a full review.
For review?
So this is the discussion, okay, here tonight, is this consistent with the previous?
Yes.
I would like you to start that.
That's. So this is the two thousand seventeen approval, right? This is what you gave us, but you said that there wasn't going to be a reduction in parking. And there weren't going to be any changes to the site. So this looks to me like you were planning to turn a significant area of the parking into.
That is pretty much exactly, exactly how they had it here.
Right, but that to me doesn't look consistent with the actual plan, approved plan. Am I missing something, or is it?
Yeah, I agree with you, it's, you know, the parking lot is so.
That's why we're happy.
So the current site wasn't in compliance with your.
Okay, if that's the case, I have no problem to push back this section. Part of the way, that way we can keep all the existing parking space in there. Because as I said.
Initially in compliance, whether they move sheds and things into the parking spaces. After the inspection, that's probably what happened.
Okay.
As I said, after I get a copy of this, I can just spread apart everything evenly. That way. We make sure we are in compliance. And now, as I said, if I have to remove these, because they going to remove the fencing. They're going to confirm with my recorder, if he's removing all the fencing displaying there. If he said, yes, all those fencing displays has to go, maybe we push this back this way. And I get my twenty-five displays as I was planning.
Part of the issue is what, what's staying on the property? Like the fencing and thing, what, what's staying and what's going? Are you taking it, that it keeps changing, this is, I think, part of our problem.
I will, I was not pushing hard on him to confirm, because I was trying to get a better understanding if I'm allowed. To change the use of the property, because if not, it doesn't make any sense for me. That's what I was kind of in defense with.
Well, it just keeps changing, so it's kind of went from one floor of the building, now it's two floors of the building, now we're moving this. This stuff around, some of the previous tenant stuff is remaining, so I think that's really what we need to.
I will confirm with him, if all the fencing displays are, is going to remove it. As I said, for now, the wide garage shed, that's permanent, I think, you know, it's, should be on the drum there. And I thought the pavilion, I know he's looking for. Someone who I wanted. And I'm just going to confirm with him, what about the green shed that is right in the corner?
So maybe you could take the site plan, we need to a bigger one, so you could mark it up to show what's going where. Make sure you don't put the displays in the parking spaces and determine what he's keeping on site. If it's gonna be just you on the site now, it's kind of evolved over the past few weeks.
I will confirm that this week. Also likely it's gonna be only me on that, on that location now.
I, I concur with, with our CEO and it's an evolving process for you as to what is staying, what's not staying. Your uses, I think with an application, I think it would be in your best interest and the commission's best interest. If you did an application and came in front of the zoning commission for review. Alright, thank commissioners. Speak to your own court on that, but I think that we're, I don't have a clear picture as to where everything is and what's being done on, on site.
Yeah, I don't either.
And I think a full application and review should be, should be done.
Agreed.
Laura?
Would that change the parking requirement? Because it seems as if there won't be as much retail.
Won't change anything unless he wants to change it, it can remain as it is. Unless he looks to modify what is currently there.
I don't have any problem to keep it as is.
Because as I said, it just.
You're looking for a revised site.
Looking for a revised site plan, up to date statement of use. What is, what, what will be where on the first and second floor of the building? Well, if the fencing remains on the landscaping portion of, of what's there currently. We would need definite direction on what you're doing with that versus. We think this is gonna happen, we're not sure if he's gonna pull this building out or not, so. That would come with a full application.
The fencing, the side fence is going to remain as is.
But an updated site plan that is.
Showing your stuff.
Showing your product, your layout of, of your displays. Would need to be done.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Does that help you with direction?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Do you have the small?
Oh, yeah.
I will like, you can send me the PDF version, even better, that way I can.
Okay.
Do it very clear, adding a beater. Okay, maybe three of you as well.
Probably call the engineer who did that, I'm sure he's, he's put the layout on it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Item C, contractor storage possible zoning map or text amendment at seven eleven middlesex turnpike. Assessor map sixty-one lot twenty-one shopping center, two districts. Agent attorney is Casella, action discussed proposal and provide feedback. Mr. Casella, welcome.
Hey, good evening, everybody at Casella, representing Uville Properties. Potential purchaser of seven eleven middlesex turnpike. Upon the left side of middlesex turnpike, right after the Route nine north on ramp. I put together a couple of display items for. Review, if you can pass those down. I can share my screen as well, just to go through.
So you're, that you're outlined.
Yeah, that's the property in blue, yep, seven, that's seven eleven middlesex turnpike, it's a two-point-two acre parcel. Right, right past the, the north on ramp to one fifty-four and exit, still two, one, again. And it's, it's actually a pretty nice property with a fairly flat, basically acre. And then it kind of slopes up and starts getting ledgy to the north and west. So right now, the potential purchaser is seeking to put like contractor storage type use on the property. Four thousand square foot building with four bays for contractor type storage. Electrician's offices, things like that. The, which is not allowed, it's not permitted use in the, in the B-two zone. And, you know, I know we've talked about this area before. And it's kind of a hodgepodge of zoning with B-two at this location where it's not really the central business shopping district. More of a gateway, B-four into the town. Contractor storage is allowed in the B-four. So the, you know, one of the first thoughts is, hey, could this property or these properties in the surrounding area be rezoned? From B-two to B-four, is this, is this the appropriate time to do it? It's, then you look at the uses and you kind of see even more of a hodgepodge as the properties have developed, probably mostly historically. And very little under the actual zoning, there seems to be many, many, many non-conforming uses. So I'm gonna share, hold on, I have this, what you can see there, I tried to put together a little matrix of what everything is. So seven eleven middlesex turnpike is vacant. South of the highway, six thirty-three middlesex turnpike is Yale. And then across the street, there's two properties that are in the B-two. There's a state DOT property, which, you know, is more or less their access. And then there's a residential property. Um, on the north side of Route nine, between the VFW highway, there's four vacant parcels. I think there used to be a residence on one of them. But they appear to all be vacant here. And then there are a few properties in this triangle, a mixed use property that includes office, residential in the, uh, I forget the name of the old building, Laura.
I'm sure.
Parker House.
The Parker House. Um, and uh, and then there's vacant parcels. Back to the west side where we are, we have one vacant parcel. And then residential properties going to the north. And on the east side, you know, the VFW, a residential property, Lombraya and B and L. Construction, right? Just a real smorgasbord. Nothing is consistent um from a zoning perspective. Um, it doesn't really seem like many property owners have taken advantage of B two regulations, maybe with the exception of the Yale property. Um, which we know is undergoing a uh, an expansion as we speak. So you know, option one would be, do we rezone all or part of these to B four? We can take advantage, try to right-size some of these properties so that the residential properties to the north of this could go to residential. Um. It, that, it's a very daunting task to, to do that and get, you guys can do it. But if I wanted to come up with an application, I would need consents from property owners and there's, there's at least, you know, just north of the highway, even there's probably eight to ten property owners. So put that aside for a second. The second option to think about is right now under your zoning, you have kind of a block of uses. You know, the warehousing, um contractor storage, uh truck terminal. That big block, um, commercial storage, sale, distribution of fuel. One of the concepts I thought of was why don't, can we just take, peel out of that building contractor business storage yards? It's a fairly popular use in town. You know, where there's a lot of contractors who call it silver home, there's a lot of contractors who need space to expand. Right? And, and that use, you know, it, with the right controls that are available through special exception, you know, can be a beneficial use in town that fits in a lot of different areas. When you add all these other things in here, warehousing, freight, trucking terminals, commercial storage, sale, distribution of fuels, if you peel that out and make just the contractor, um, building contractor business storage yard of permitted use in the B two. You know, that's another alternative here. That I think is probably a little bit more feasible from a regulatory perspective to get done versus having individual applicants try to rezone this whole area or portions of it. Um. So that's, that's, that was my brainstorm. I put together kind of what a regulation amendment would look like. Um. On page two, so you'd add a new uh use, subject to special exception with just the building contractor business or storage yard. You would delete in the B two, you would delete that from the uh thirty two point three point three, which is the prohibition on that block of uses, the wholesale lumber building materials, freight materials, truckings. And then, you know, one of the things Chris and I kind of spoke about was you can tailor building contractor use by section fifty three, by saying something like, in the B two district, building contractors must be located or will be located within, on lots that are within five hundred feet of Route nine. So basically, only leave this area of the B two zone available for the building contractor use and not the other B two zones, which, you know, of course are where uh Stop and Shop is further along Route one, CBS, Stage Road, you know, those are the, all the other main uh B two areas. So by creating a special standard under section fifty three, we could limit where building contractor uses would be available. And I picked five hundred arbitrarily because it fits this site. But it would also allow this type of use to, to, to go on some of these other vacant parcels that are in between the VFW highway, Route nine, and the triangles. You know, that, you know, could be, this could be an appropriate type of use for those, for those properties.
Wouldn't you have to also modify section thirty two point zero, the purpose for the shopping center business B two district?
Yeah, yeah, you know, that's, we, I know we've talked about this before, so that's.
Because that's the whole philosophical approach, all the limitations, if you will.
Yeah.
In the B two district. And while the proposed building contractor use is allowed in the industrial I district and in the B four district, those purposes are clearly different from the shopping center B two district purpose thirty two point zero.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I looked at the, the table in section fifty three regarding the uh limits of outside storage.
Yeah.
And it's twenty five percent in the um B two district.
And that's fine.
Whereas in the B four district, it's considerably larger, which indicates to me that the intent was to allow for there to be outside storage in the I and B four districts, but not so much in the B two.
Yeah, but that's actually, I think, not inconsistent with what we're looking for because that, you're exactly right, twenty, only outside storage is limited to twenty five percent in the B two, so it's much more restrictive than the B four, which allows seventy five percent. But they would have to live with that, right? It's really the building that they want to be able to house the um contractor uses with, you know, obviously there'd be parking outside. But the storage of materials, when you have a building, isn't as necessary. So they'd be subject, it would be a cleaner, you know, they'd be cleaner properties in the B two because there'd be less outside storage room available. So it's not, I don't think that's inconsistent with what we're uh, what we're asking for. Yeah, I mean, I guess at, to your point about section thirty two point oh, it kind of brings up the initial question that we asked about, you know, why are these properties even B two to begin with? Because they're not in the central shopping area.
Retail is not a completely dip.
Oh, no, and.
The shopping center B two district was in, intended in a, in a certain phraseology to be for people walking and shopping for going from store to store, pushing baby strollers and uh having shopping carts. And a building contractor's business in a B two district is not that.
Right, in, certainly in the B two district near Stop and Shop. But I don't think in this B two district, which isn't in a pedestrian friendly area and isn't in the central part of Old Saybrook, a, a building contractor use is inconsistent with the uses that have developed in this area.
Well, this lot in this particular today's owned B two district could be used for relocation down the road if necessary due to sea level rise and whatever impacting other parts of town B two in particular, which might need to relocate.
Wow.
So in a long-term plan, it provides that opportunity as well.
Then, then I'm sure the contractors will be willing to sell out to the uh, the developer who wants to put the shopping center there. So that's, you know, yes, you're right. But we're looking at trying to figure out if there's an opportunity here for this property on, in this area to have a building contractor type use.
Help me understand i- i- if this was a perfect location and allowable business in this location, what does the business look like indoor versus outdoor? Um, usage, storage.
Well, a- again, that would all be subject to a special exception permit, but I think it's, it's basically bays that could be rented to contractors to have a little office space, park, interior parking, little shop, and then parking vehicles and employee vehicles outside. Could there be storage of materials? Yes. Next to the highway, it'd need to be screened, because it's twenty five percent maximum. So that, that would be very accessory to just having the building and being able to have these properties. The, the building is, is the, is the primary requirement.
Are you storing outdoors or proposing?
No, we, we, yeah, yeah, that, that, yeah, th- there isn't plans for outdoor storage. Um. Would we on a site plan show an area? Probably, right? Because it's allowed, it's up to twenty five percent.
Right.
Um. But that's not what's driving this. What's driving this is the building.
Uh, is the, um, so it wouldn't be for a dedicated, specific contractor business. It is, if, if, if I paraphrase what you said correct, correctly, is bays that would be rented out to other contractors.
Yeah.
With some office space.
Yeah. Yeah, it could be used.
Uh, up to how many?
Uh, you know, again, back of napkin, this is preliminary, you know, looking at about a four thousand square foot building and four thousand square foot base. You know, subject to septic RP.
Right, right.
Different site limitations.
And of the three options that you uh put in front of us, which one is that you feel the most comfortable with?
I think adding contractor storage, just that piece, building contractor business storage yards as a permitted use in the B two, but only in this location, you know, within a certain proximity to Route nine. Then nobody closer to Main Street, Elm Street, you know, would be able to have that type of business down there. This, it's just a unique, there's a unique patch of zoning up here.
Mm hmm.
And I think we can take advantage of that through the regulations to, to confine this type of use to that part of town.
There's a level of this, this is a very separate route.
It's on Essex Road over by um Airs Point, uh, Lom or not, what's the name of the restaurant?
Yeah.
Otter, Otter, Otter Restaurant.
Yeah.
Oh.
Across.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that could be, i- if, if the five hundred foot was there, that could be uh similarly used. I think that's, that's where like the um Island Cove, S and S Marine are.
Yeah, the old DOT property.
Comfort Cafe.
Yeah.
Kind of putting the application aside. It, it is, I, I guess it never really made sense, and I know we've talked about it, but this whole area by Route nine going to Essex with the B two, the B three with lots cut in half with non-conformities and residents, I mean. Does it make sense, and I think we've talked about it before, to maybe consider rezoning some of it? I, I don't. I mean, it'd be twenty five years I've been here and I haven't seen a Dunkin' Donuts or a Starbucks or anybody banging down the door to put in a home goods, you, you know, in the, say, you know, the typical retail shopping center, maybe at some point, I know it's kind of a burden for the applicant to rezone all of it. But does it even make sense for it to be to, be B two?
When did it become B two? Because the map I received when I joined the commission a year ago, this was B four. I should have brought the map and put it on my wall in my office.
It's probably the coloring of, from the printer.
Good one.
Unless.
What does that kind of consideration develop?
Doesn't really address it, address it. I, it doesn't really address it by just, okay, so that's the way that, okay.
When you watch. Oh, on the other side, as being within five hundred feet, does Route nine constitute just a highway road that itself where the exit ramp stalls? And so if it includes the exit ramp as well, then uh it would be one, two, three, four, five different B two properties.
Yeah.
Why not just rezone the whole thing B four?
I see what I was looking at.
It would be more or less.
Yeah.
But you have residential properties in there.
Yeah, or you could, you could chop off. Or, you know, you can bring, uh, if I can, I'll, I'll come back.
Well, that's the tough part of the two is, you know, do you, do you go through and you take the residential uses in the B two and make them residential?
Or B three.
But, but.
You could bring B three down.
Three goes down, so now it's kind of from trying to determine if it's B two to B four. Now we're rezoning all the way to Essex in some ways by adding the B three. And I think that's the thought process behind the petition to amend the regulation versus the petition to amend the map and then kind of open a, a can of worms.
Yeah, if, if the regulation was amended to allow the building contractor use in the B two in these areas and you took up the rezoning of these properties to make it more consistent, then you know, we'd still be conformant.
And if you were to change them to B two or lot, or I'm sorry, B four, a lot of these would reduce non-conformities that are currently existing. Right? B and L really would impact Lombraya, because that would be allowed in B two, B four.
VFW.
The VFW, the residential at three seventeen Essex, it would probably open it up for more. It would add more uses.
The Parker House development with mixed uses, you know, the commercial component would still remain.
So I guess it would be, what do you do with the residentially zone, seven fifteen, middlesex fifteen, month and seven thirty one, you know?
Right.
There.
Yeah, to me, you bring the B three down. If, if you look at the screen, here's the B three coming. So this is a residential property. This is a residential property. So you just bring the B three down right to the blue triangle and make everything else B four. Or if you wanted to keep, make that area more available for development, then maybe chop it off somewhere else.
Well, I guess the thing with the B three too is it, it allows both.
Correct.
It would allow residential.
Lighter, lighter resident, I mean lighter commercial and residential. As, as a good transition.
B two doesn't allow for residential, so you lose some of the commercial aspect that you gain the opportunity for more residential.
There's a, there's another, there's another B two district with it, that is within five hundred feet of Route nine.
Yeah.
That's, yes, so if you were to apply the five hundred feet qualifier within the B two district, you also have the possibility for building, builders contractors yards in a completely different part of town that happens to be B two close to Route nine.
Right, that's Island Cove, is there S and S Marine. Um, the comfort, comfort in, those are those properties. So you, that would open that up.
Well, you kind of.
We could add qualifier for Route one.
Exemptions, exceptions, exclusions.
Yeah. Good.
What's our direction or semi-direction to the discussion the applicant has been having with us? What is? That's. Rezoning would make potentially, I said, rezoning would potentially make more sense, but it would be quite involved.
Well, that's up to, to the applicant, it's really not the applicant wishes to apply, but I, I, based on what has been, what, what has transferred, transpired tonight. So that's up to Mr. Casella and the uh, and the business proposal.
Yeah, I mean, uh, remaining question?
So do I understand the commission thinks it's probably a good idea to rezone it as B four? The corporate parcels?
I would say it's probably mixed.
Yeah, that's the problem, that's the problem, right? That's the problem, that's the problem, right? Because in my mind, from a zoning perspective, it doesn't make sense to leave a couple of as B two, add some B four and do a hodgepodge. It's like, it's either you redo it all as B four, or you leave it as B two and work within that. If you're, if you're.
I guess the thing is, can you get buy-in from some of the folks here for the B four, which?
Yeah, but if you don't get buy-in from Yale, for example, because going from B two to B four is more restricted. Larger setbacks, smaller percentage of block coverage, you know, there's, there's there are questions, large building. Right?
Well, I mean, I guess.
Is this in the pedestrian loop or is that?
No.
Not, but the pedestrian note, it's not in the, not in the loop.
Not in the loop.
Okay.
Now in this location.
Because I see.
So this is middle six.
The way I was looking at it, it wasn't.
Do, do do the commission members think, uh, regulation amendment, tax amendment would be looked at favorable? If Taylor's correct.
Just to address all the other issues you're talking about.
Right. I mean, the S and S building and the other buildings, they all are kind of contractor storage as they are. Yeah. If you look at the big square blocks, the big bays.
Yeah, that little piece over there doesn't look like a just here.
To answer your question, I think it could be either way. Right, I don't see a clear, a clear definitive one or the other from what I'm hearing around the table this evening. I think that would have to fall on you and the applicant to decide what direction we would want to go.
Sure.
Okay.
Fairness. No, I think we have a good D back night, so. You're just as confused as we are. It's difficult to. When I look, and I really looked at it too, I went, wow, this is worse than I thought it was gonna be.
You didn't point that out.
Yeah.
You know, but it's been sitting like that for a long time.
Right, well, we noticed it in the Yale application and it's out of place, so.
Well, I mean, if it was north, I'm just kind of brainstorming out loud. If the parcels north of Route nine went to B four.
Yeah.
The parcel south of Route nine stayed B two and the residential went to B three.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I think.
I mean, you kind of have a little bit of a divider, it's not as much spot zoning is just picking.
I mean, if, if there was a zone change, I think that's what it would be.
But it would have to be north of Route nine.
Yeah.
And then going to the B three would protect the residential properties in the Monk Road neighborhood.
Right.
To having less intense development.
Okay. Yeah. We'll talk to some of the private ones over there soon. Thank you.
We need to sit down, I mean, as you go, if you go all the way to Essex. Yeah, like remember Oceanside, the back is B three, the back is residential, all those properties just have, I think it's five hundred feet or three hundred feet from the center line and the road. So all the lots are in two zones.
Yeah, they are, or lots.
Yeah, that's some kind of situational.
We talked about at one point, kind of going through and saying, okay, if it's half one or the other, maybe you just kind of make it a little one, because then you have someone who's got a business with a house in the back with a residence district boundary, so we'll add that to the project.
Okay. Moving on to D, car wash and repairs, one thirteen thirty-three Boston Post Road, assessment map twenty-seven, plot twenty-four, Gateway, the business B four district, coastal area management zone, pedestrian note, Agent Joseph Ren, action by P back to the app.
Just to clarify, it's not repair, that was a type.
That was the title, okay, so, car wash.
Car wash.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you, Mr. Ren.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ed is still there, Ed's involved in this one too, and I believe some of the, um, the contract purchasers may be online too, I just can't see a whole list of who's on and who's not. Um, but I'll, I'll give you a brief, uh, introduction here and go through the materials really quickly. This looks like it's your fourth, kind of like preliminary feedback application tonight, which is a little unusual. So thank you for your time. Happy New Year to everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Uh, this site is where Tequila's Restaurant used to be, um, the building has since been demolished, you all probably know. Uh, up on the screen, I have the Google Maps, um, so you could see the site location right across from Dairy Queen. Surrounded by electrical wholesalers and the Trove to the west, uh, to the north, this is a Save a Tree, Save a Tree site. Um, so this site, for a long time, has been developed, you can see the footprint of the pavement and, uh, the large building that once was there. Um, that has been taken down and, um, removed, uh, down to the ground as we speak. So the contract purchasers would like to construct a uh, a quick lube, uh, oil change site in the southeast corner of the property here, uh, and then on the west side of the property, uh, add a car wash. So the intent of tonight's meeting is just to throw some conceptual, uh, renderings out, we're also going to talk to ARB next week, next Monday night on a preliminary basis, just to get feedback, so as we develop the plans, uh, we could proceed, uh, accordingly. Um, so now that you have the location, let me just change the share here. Can you all see the new screen? All right. Yeah, I had it, I, I just had, I was on full screen and I just had to kind of shrink that down a little bit, so. I have it up now, this is just a conceptual, uh, site plan with the property boundaries. Uh, at the bottom of the screen is, is Route one. Uh, there is an existing paid, uh, entrance at the southeast corner. There's another existing one at the southwest corner. Um, with the flow of the traffic in the parking lot for the car wash and so forth, we would propose to maintain the existing one, we would reduce its width because it would only need to be a one-way in. Um, and then add a new one, but eliminate the existing southwest one and add a new one in the center or two-way, uh, both in and out. So this orange block in the southeast corner, that would be the oil change, uh, quick lube facility. Um, and then again on the west, this would be the car wash. So as folks enter, um, the southeast corner, they could come in in queue for the oil change, they have plenty of, uh, queue space here into the oil change, and then they could exit and take a right turn only and go out. Uh, or they have the opportunity to enter through the car wash if they feel so inclined, either through this opening, or once they come through the building, they could come through here as well. Um, the two-way entrance and exit, uh, folks could come in there and they can, um, generally can't access the oil change site, uh, through this center location, that would be this dedicated entrance. Here would be for the car wash to enter, go around this really long queue in the north side of the property, then there would be three pay lanes, um, which would go back down to one because only one car goes through the tunnel at one time. Um, so the car would enter here, go through the building for the car wash, um, exit here and then exit the site, uh, all the way through here, so everything's kind of lined up, uh, properly. Um, the one interesting thing about this site is with the large parking lot, you could see it all in the background, you can see all the parking spaces uh, in a lighter gray color. Those are all within the within the, um, uh, front landscape buffer right now, so those would be removed, that would be all green space. Uh, for previous developments, the now demolished building, the sidewalk with the brick soldier course was installed and all the street trees were installed as well, so those, those would remain. Um, and then we would widen the front landscape area and then provide, you could see all the green around, um, of course, the perimeter landscape buffers and meet all the landscape percentage requirements. Um, but the interesting thing is with the current building, or former building rooftop plus all of the asphalt, uh, that was there, this provides either equal or slightly less impervious service um, than the, uh, former condition with the building and the parking lot, so we're looking to either be equivalent to the landscaped area, uh, or be slightly increased, um, since we have a little bit less impervious area and then more conforming, of course, because we have the full front landscape buffer, the full side, uh, landscape buffers all the way around and then meet all of the street tree uh, requirements, the island requirements, um, and the trees on site, total trees on site requirements. So all those things will be able to bring into, uh, conformance, uh, on the site. For the building, uh, we submitted several renderings. Change the share again, so we provided, this, this is for the quick lube. So the, uh, the architect, um, uh, many meetings, we talked about, uh, the regulations and how we like shadow lines and alternating roof lines and uh, dormers and breaks in the facade, so you can see all of that has been implemented, it's I think it's one of the more attractive oil change buildings that I've seen in our whole state, um, so I put a lot of time and effort, uh, into this. Um, signage is there just for a placeholder. Obviously, all the signs, the building signs and the site signs, since it's two buildings on one site, all those would meet the, uh, would meet the sign requirements, so once we got into that level of, um, that level of detail. So, just running through the other ones that we provided, so this is kind of a site perspective with the front green landscape area, the car wash building, you could see all the breaks in the roof line, breaks in the facade, uh, very interesting, uh, buildings that go with our desired architecture, uh, in pedestrian notes in the B four along Route one. Uh, and then in, in the distance in the southeast corner, you can see the, um, oil change between the two, there would be, um, vacuums, um, car floor vacuums, uh, that are typical now for car washes, and those would be lined up on the eastern side of the car wash building in between the two buildings. Um, I didn't point that out on the site, but there's, there are a row of one or two rows of parking in there, and those would double as parking spaces and um, vacuum spaces as well. So there were two other renderings that we provided, just from different perspectives. Um, this particular one, you can see the entire run of the car wash building with all the breaks in the roof and then the breaks in the facade too, these aren't typical for car washes they do, but to be consistent, um, with section, section sixty-eight uh, in the town regulations, you can see all of the breaks in the facade, there's one here, back in, comes over, goes back in and then around the building, so there's no run longer than the forty feet, I think most of them are fairly shorter than the forty feet, uh, before we get a shadow line. And the last one in the packet was this one, and this one is the eastern side of the car wash building where you can see the, uh, the vax, uh, lined up there, so someone could park on site, but there's really no real use to, you, you can't access the car wash if you, if you're a pedestrian. So there's really no, you know, very limited parking need only for employees, so we had a few parking spaces for both the oil change building and the car wash, um, just to accommodate employees, maybe an occasional visitor or maintenance worker, something like that, but in general, um, the public, the main parking spaces would be for, uh, the vacuums and most of the customers would just circulate through the site and enter, get the car, either oil change or a car wash or both, and then leave the site. Um, without really needing to park and go into the building unless they're, uh, waiting to get their oil changes and so forth. Um, so that, that's everything we have, uh, the uses are generally required, car wash isn't really well-defined in the regulations, um, but generally in this zone, everything is, these uses, um, are generally allowed. Um, so we just wanted to show you the plan that we're working on, the building and the site, just to get your feedback, so we can incorporate that into the plans and the applications moving forward. So with that, if Ed wants to add anything, or if any of the contract purchasers are online and they want to add anything, other than that, we could try to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I, I, um, Ed Casella, yeah, Dave, uh, Rick Howes from Mount Burning Company. And I see Damian Fox is on, so we can try to get Rick on again.
He denied.
He denied.
Yeah.
That's funny. Try again. This, we'll call it a misclick.
Yeah. No.
No, okay. So, yeah, you know, Rick, Damian's an operator, Rick is the developer. Um, so I don't know if they have anything further they'd like to, uh, to add to Joe's presentation.
Um, this is Damian Fox. Um, Rick was on, I'm sure he'll probably pop back on, but, um, yeah, happy to answer any questions.
I'm here as well, thank you.
Okay, Rick's on.
There he is, hey, Rick.
Hey there. Um, happy to answer any questions from the board, um, on behalf of our group here.
We're sure you have any questions or CEO offices, sorry.
How many cars go through the car wash that you need three pay lanes? I'm just trying to get an idea of the volume, it seems.
So, um, that, that varies obviously by weather and by season. For, for the, for the quick lube, the most cars you usually see in a day on a very, in a very busy place would be forty to fifty cars all day. Car wash, you could see up to, you know, a couple hundred on a busy day. You know, the car wash in the, in the wintertime on a busy, uh, nice sunny day after a snowstorm would be when it's the busiest. Um, summertime is usually, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty cars a day. Uh, but that can go up on, um, you know, in the wintertime when you see, uh, when all the cars are, when you have to use the windshield washer fluid in your car, that's when it's busy. So that's, you know.
It's two or three days, right?
Yeah, so like a, a couple weeks out of, a couple weeks out of the year, um, you know, the, it's busy and most of the time it's, um, you know, I'd say a hundred, two hundred cars a day would be a very good, very good business.
So how many, I guess what, so this is, one car goes through the car wash at once and just.
Oh, yeah, so, 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 yeah, let me, so to answer that, so with, with the car washes you see, um, nowadays, it's the new model car wash, which basically is a, it's a longer, long tunnel with, with the vacuums which are free to the, free to the community. So, um, how we, how they, they design these now is they do a very long queue. Um, and that, and that's to prevent any traffic issues, but, um, what happens is you, you have three lanes that break down to one. And then, yeah, one car goes through the tunnel at the time, and then when they leave, then they stop and vacuum their car before they, before they exit the property. So, um, how this is, this is designed, it's, it's designed so that the queue is in the back and that, that when the car exits, it's got, you know, drip, they call it, um, drip, drip time, so that once the car exits, it's not soaking wet by the time it gets to the street, doesn't cause any problems with, with, um, Once the car exits, it's not soaking wet by the time it gets to the street, doesn't cause any problems with with um with, you know, traffic and. Icing and so forth. Um so that's kind of how they're designed now. They're designed a lot better. Than they used to be because of the the new model. Um you know, they're like. The the old car washes, you know, used to rely with convenience stores and and other things. This is um. Basically, they call it the subscription model where you where you you have membership. So. You um the the customer washes their car and then uses the free vacuums. You don't, you haven't seen many new ones in the area. Um you know, but.
I guess that's why I'm asking the question because it looks like you can probably have twenty cars there waiting to. Yeah, it seems like a lot of, usually we ask for too much stacking and and this one, it's like, wow, that's.
Yeah.
For a hundred cars a day.
Yeah, and and that and that's that's the the, you know, when you, when you're applying. For car washes, the biggest concern is is traffic and and queuing and stacking. Folks like yourselves, the more, the better, even though it's overkill. Um with the with the size of the property it is, it, you know, and that's how it worked out really well with how um. How Jim designed it and end up working really, really well for, you know, it is overkill, but um.
We want to be make sure that we're good neighbors and not backing traffic up uh on the Route one. Um so we want to design this for the busiest days. And you're absolutely correct in saying that most days we won't need nearly that much queuing space, but um. There will be uh hopefully days that um we're running. You know, hundreds of cars through. It's not just a, you know, a fifty car kind of day. So we could have busy times that there are. You know, fifteen, twenty cars waiting. Um that would be rare, but. Um we do want to design for sort of a worst case scenario.
Yeah.
I have some questions regarding uh. Let's see, start with section sixty three landscaping. And section sixty three point five point two says no more than fifteen spaces in a row without a new intervening landscape island. On the alongside the the longer building in the center aisle, there's definitely more than fifteen spaces in a row without. An intervening landscape island. The other parts of section sixty three also specify how much interior parking lot landscaping is required. Uh based on the the account of the parking spaces and that's that's for you to work out. And then there's this section sixty three point three uh point one and point. Three and point five uh should be looked at closely. In section sixty two point two point five, there's mention of curb cuts, both in the red words right up front in that section. And then sixty two point two point five part A, where uh. Minimization of the curb cuts is uh highly encouraged. And then sixty two point two point two and again in the red, the 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 front landscape area and perimeter buffer. Are not not gonna, should not be sacrificed in order to provide for additional curb cuts. In sixty eight point one, point two, point B, point one. On the next page in the gray box, it says that within the pedestrian node, this is within the pedestrian node. Uh do not locate a parking area or access driveway to or connecting parking areas between. A non-residential building and the street. There is an access driveway between both buildings and the street. In the, in the, well, I'll leave that one out because it's in the pedestrian node, there's supposed to be. A street to door walkway, but there's hardly a reason for any pedestrian to want to walk to a doorway from the sidewalk. Uh for this use. In sixteen sixty eight point one point two point B point two. Any parking area will be located at least ten feet farther from the street line. Than that portion of the principal building that is closest to the street line. All those parking spaces between the two buildings need to be ten feet farther back. From at least the front edge of the smaller building.
So one one question, one question though is. Are the twenty spaces by the car wash, are those all vacuums and not parking? You see in the picture, there's twenty spaces, they're all vacuumed.
Where where are those?
Correct. The intent is to have vacuums along that side of the car wash building. Um the parking shown here may be overkill and would um.
So I guess the question, are there more vacuums than the other nine parking spaces on the other. Side or so there's twenty nine vacuum spaces in the center?
Granted, the vacuum space serves a function other than purely parking. However, it's to me, the intent of the regulation was to put the pavement in a pedestrian node farther back. Then then the then the front of the building. So we we can talk about that in the future, but that would be a concern, right? And the uh. And employee parking should be shown on the plan somewhere.
Yeah, that's the intent for those spots in back.
The um windows and uh according to section sixty eight point two point six. Should not have reflective glass. We have a recent experience where we got reflective glass on windows and that's not. Allowed in according to section sixty eight in our regulations. So you get a heads up ahead of time. Windows not be mirrored or reflective glass. The commission is highly likely to request a traffic study based on the number of vehicles per day just mentioned a few minutes ago. And as usual, when calculating parking spaces, you know, we round up for each separate calculation. Uh there are likely to be uh onsite directional signs. There's a lot of arrows in the aisles. And so there was, there are limits to onsite directional signs and um in the in the in the signed section. Right, that's section sixty four. The signs on the building where there's a. What is that, a Route Route one in the peak over the part of the building that has says express car wash? Those would be considered separate walls if they are uh two feet, more than two feet or more. Difference in the plane. Otherwise, you got too many signs on one wall. So then the upper triangle has to be recessed two feet from the wall that the other sign hangs on. In section, oh, so we got, there's, there's a parking, I am, I'm sorry, side, there was a sidewalk showing on on that plan in the right away, right? That's okay. Alright, that's uh. I think that's all I have for now.
Um a a couple of items, just clarifications. You know, again, this is nowhere near final. This is just kind of preliminary conceptual. Um if the vacuum spaces are considered parking spaces, we'll. Either reduce this down to fifteen, we can talk about that internally, or we can add a. One space is a landscape island. We can pull these back if if that's what the final design allows. If this building. Stays in this plane, we can pull these a little bit uh further back to meet that regulation. Um there was a lot of discussion of. The access driveways, but we're actually reducing the access driveway from what we have now. So. Right now existing, we have a very wide uh two-way one on the southeast corner. And then we have a very wide two-way traffic um. Uh driveway on the southwest corner. So we're eliminating the southwest. We're reducing the southeast down to one lane only. And we're adding a new one. So four lanes of traffic for exit driveways are going to enter and exit driveways are going down to three. So we're actually, we're significantly reducing the the width of. Entry driveways through the front landscape area. And we're considerably expanding the front landscape area by taking all this existing grandfathered parking out. Um and replacing it with landscaping. Um so that's what all of this green area here represents. So. We're reducing the width of the traffic entry driveways and we're extensively re uh increasing the landscape and the front landscape area. This green dash line all the way around is the required uh landscape area. So you can see we're just along that and then that goes up all the way around the perimeter of the property. So. We have the full perimeter landscape buffer plus more.
Am I understanding that the only entrance to the oil change facility will be on the eastern side? So if someone, if someone was to enter into the the double Y. Uh they cannot access the oil change facility?
Uh theoretically, even though the arrow doesn't show it, that small um section in between the two lots. Uh could be used in either direction. In practice, it's really not going to be used. At all with the exception of employees leaving the facility because anyone coming in. To the oil change is then going to make the U-turn and go towards the back of the building to enter the building. Um but uh if someone were to enter into the center um cut there. And and then decide that they meant to go to the oil change and not to the car wash, they could take a right and get into the. Uh oil change queue that way. It's not the intent, but it it's not physically impossible either.
Because the way, the way it looks on paper to me now is that um you can enter at the eastern side. And also get to the car wash, but you can't enter the center and get to the oil change. So you you would propose two-way traffic there?
Uh we widen it to do two-way traffic if um if necessary. Uh again. Um the intent is really just to have connections for uh the employee parking. Um.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bypass.
Yeah, so it's not real, it's or if someone is to, you know, go into the oil change. Line, go around the back of the building and then decide that they don't want an oil change, the line's too long. Um whatever it might be. Um then.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The the point is that that cut that pass through there isn't really going to see much traffic one way or the other, but we could. Widen it to provide two-way traffic if um if the board feels that's important. We have the space to to do that there. We just didn't show it as two-way traffic.
I just see a a potential uh bottleneck there that someone entered in the middle and couldn't get to where they wanted to go. For the oil change. Um and then backup traffic. I I I just see it as a potential. Or pull it to the car wash. And that center section where all the parking spaces are, all of those will be located but on both or will be vacuums on both sides?
That's not the intent really. Um it we.
Yeah, one one thing with that, so one, how do these vacuums work? They're not like your standard vacuums like you have. Um like the old style where you see the the cans. So so most, most of these new model car washes, they'll have a row of washes, but. Several of them won't have vacuum capabilities, but they'll, but they'll have, um that's usually what they use for their employees. Um because in in most zoning um regulations, they those will count as parking spaces, you know, a lot of these. Lots are very small, like ours is big, but like um a lot of the lots that that these go for um. Because these vac spaces are wider, so they're twelve feet wide as opposed to um. What I think, what what is it normal? Joe, what is it?
Nine feet.
Nine feet. So um so so basically, what we ideally, we would like to be able to have the ability. To um have vax on both rows if needed, especially if we have to shorten this first for um. For that, what what the gentleman was saying earlier, if we have to cut some vacuums out, because ideally, we'd like to have twenty vacuums because that avoids a bottleneck. Like on a busy day, on a spring day in April, that's when everybody's vacuuming their cars and all that. So so that that's where it kind of bottlenecks hold up. So the more vacuums, the better. And the way they are now, as they're designed, they look good. You know, I mean, they're not like those big canisters with garbage all over the place. It's um, it's a, it's a vac system, but um we don't have it. Um we don't, as far as. Internally, like what we can do, when we talk to the board, we'll, you know, we'll definitely, there's room here to work with this, both on the. The access, the bypass that we had and with the vax and the parking. Um I think that the new thing today was about the vax. The parking not being able to start there. So I think we would just have to relook at that and maybe we wouldn't have to use both rows. If we could come to a uh an agreement on on that part.
The the vacuums uh will only be accessible by a person who purchased a car wash? Or will they also be free to?
So.
Non-users.
So 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 in the industry, you there's a membership. So if you're a member, you get to use free vacuums. If you buy a car wash, you get to use free vacuums. Um and we try to design these so that that's the case, but. Um if somebody were to come in off the street and use a vacuum, that happens. Um you know, policing that is 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 up to, you know, up to us, but we typically. That the vacuum should be for the members so that it's not um, you know, free for all.
Right, other facilities like what you're proposing here. Um that I've used and there's one over on exit seventy four by Stop and Shop. There's another one off. Exit seventy five and then there's another one off on the exit of uh where Home Depot is on that exit.
Yeah.
Uh uh is only accessible app to those who purchase a car wash.
Right, that's 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 the idea, that's the goal. And it's hard, it's depending on your layout and I think um. After this call, when when Rick and Joe and Jim and I talk, you know, there may be some ways to try to figure that out to make it better, but that's. That's that's the ultimate goal is to have it for members only. Otherwise, you know. You one of the, one of the ways we could do that as well is with angled spaces. Um that's another thing that the car wash guys use to to to, you know, there's some diff, some different aspects to control that.
Right. Um yeah, there's one familiar that opened up about about six months ago. Uh off of Route nine in the Britain by Central that has the angled.
Yeah.
Parking for the vacuums, which works, I think, better than a straight on that you proposed. Potentially propose here. Have you um in general, have you looked at other. Uh options for the building layout versus the way you uh it is on a preliminary? And and what I mean is, have you looked at the car wash? To be turned so that the long side of it is is facing the street. Um with the with the um oil change location in in the back. Um is that a potential option or is the property restricted?
We looked at a a number of different options um and really with the traffic flow. Um the uh the and the visibility, um the best. That we've come up with in working with Joe Ren was um this sort of a layout. Um we we don't like the idea of a hundred and fifty foot long building on the front lot line. It just seems to um not in spirit in spirit with the town. It's too large, it's too industrial looking. Uh even with the different facade changes. Um at least that was our opinion. And also the uh traffic layouts on the site then became a lot more complicated and. Uh less intuitive for the user. So to answer your question, yes, we did look at a lot of different options. Uh and this is what we've come up with as um our best case right now.
Getting the queue length and the queue lanes as far away from Route one, where you know DOT is going to be looking at that as well. Was a goal here and with the long axis of the property, north and south, this makes most sense from a planning perspective.
And um our builder is also on the call. I don't know if you, if we need to add him on, but he's on the call. And um, our builder is also on the call. I don't know if we if we need to add him on, but he's on the call and he um. He's built several of these and he's running and he's designed this to. You know. Looking at everything that has gone wrong or right and all these other ones and um, he really likes this this layout for. For all the reasons that Rick and Joe came up, just came up with.
Oh, Damian, this is Jim Simmons. Um, yeah, I um, the reason. The reason why the building is is facing the orientation it is is one of the other reasons is because of the uh, the vacuums themselves. Uh, with the traffic and all, I mean, I'm sure it would be less desirable to have a bunch of vacuums facing uh. The street as well. This kind of conceals some of that. Um, and as far as the, as far as the the bypass lanes. Uh, you know, both for the oil change and the car wash, the car wash, we have a bypass lane in the front. So if you go through. The pay station or if you decide you want to go through the, you know, you get back to the queue and you don't want to go through. Um, they can let you through the gate and you can come out the front. Uh, some people get claustrophobic and, you know, have anxiety issues and they don't want to go through, you know. They're they're afraid to go through. At least you can let them out through and the same.
Some where somebody comes with a big truck, something big, something in their truck. There's having that access is um.
Right.
Very, very helpful.
Right.
When it comes to something like that.
And and the bypass and the same thing with the bypass behind the oil change, you know, typically. You know, if you're waiting in line and it gets takes a little bit longer than what you expect and you gotta go, you can at least you have a way to get out. Uh, so I don't, yeah, certainly not intended for uh, two-way traffic at all. I don't believe and um, you know, I mean. Not sure that it would make much sense because I think that would make it worse for traffic for somebody coming through the car wash trying to. Kind of cut into the to the oil change as well, so. Um. So and we did look at this and again, you know, I don't, I'm not sure that there's enough room to turn a hundred and eighty, a hundred and fifty-foot building. Parallel to the street and have access, you know, in one end and out the other. And maybe and then to answer the one of the other questions, I think a while ago, is that, you know, the cars are loaded in and they're, you know, they're. They're pretty much right on top of each other. So you're going to get in a hundred and fifty-foot building. You're going to have. You know, anywhere from seven, you could have seven to eight cars in that building at the same time. So the idea is that, you know, once you're in the queue, get them in, get them through and then get them on their way. And like Damian said. If it's, you know, from a standpoint of how to use the vacuums, um, you know, make them where they're only usable or accessible to. The people that have paid for the car wash. I mean, we've looked at the option of possibly doing them at a an angle. Uh, that way there would be very difficult for a car coming in to kind of turn, make a U-turn in the parking. You know, in that drive aisle and access the vacuums themselves. Um, so that's, you know, that's something if if the board thinks that that's um, more desirable for traffic flow and everything else, that's something I don't. Think they'd have a problem with at all. Uh, as far as the parking spaces, I think. Joe might be showing about twenty of them perpendicular to the car wash building. Those spaces, uh, I think if I do the math right. Those spaces would probably equate to about fifteen. Uh, vac- vacuum stalls because the stalls themselves are twelve to twelve and a half feet wide. So um. So I think we'd be, you know, I think we'd be less than that, you know, if it's considered a parking space, we'd still be less than, you know, fifteen or less than what. Um, you know, the regulations say. Uh, moving them, you know, moving them back, I mean, part of the whole car wash industry. And the bigger draw, I think, for the car wash themselves is actually the vacuums, if you can believe it. Um, it's kind of a big perk that the members have that um, so you know. How to how to provide enough vacuums where the patrons can use them, you know, for a few minutes after they've gotten a car wash and then. Be on their way, I think is important, so.
Yeah, about the spacing between. Each vacuum space. I mean, when the when the when they're vacuuming their cars, the doors are open. So when they're next to each other, is there enough room?
Yeah.
So when the doors open.
Yeah, that's that's what you need the twelve feet. Um, you know, if if you can go a little bit wider than that, you know, maybe that's, you know, the operator has usually a an easier time. When the spaces are, you know, a little bit wider. The other thing is is that these uh, the vacuums themselves are these boom, they're booms. And they're, they've got like an arch. Um, they're all powder coated, so they, you know, they've got different color options and that sort of thing. They're the kind of neat, the central back unit itself is is set on a pad, you know, somewhere in an enclosure. Um, we haven't shown that on the plan yet, but uh, that would probably be somewhere down along the back of the building.
And but the beauty, to answer your question about that, the beauty of this lot is because we have the size is that we can make those spaces wider. At twelve feet, where a lot of the car washes that are built now. They they do make them smaller because they don't have the room and that and it's even though the doors fit, but the problem, the problem is. People are uncomfortable pulling in with two cars on the side. So the way we have it here is. The ideal scenario for somebody that wants to pull in and not worry about the cars on either side of them.
Uh, one 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 other thing I think that was brought up before maybe had to do with the the queue up space or the the pay station lanes. Again, they're uh, they're going to be signing up members too. So sometimes the members take a little bit longer to sign up and if you got people, if you got. People that are members already that want to get through, so you want to have like a mem- you know, you want to have a lane maybe dedicated to just. Cash, credit card, new members. You might want to have a lane that's um, or two lanes that are dedicated to subscription or members. Um, and then, you know, invariably in this state, you know, we're in. This stuff is all electronic, it's outside, sometimes things break down, so. Um, sometimes somebody goes through one of the uh, the gates and they've got to be repaired, so. Ideally for for a car wash that's this size, the three lanes, I think, would be more desirable, so. That's that's the reason why I think we went that route. And to have that that extra queue up space. On the busier days is just going to be a benefit for everybody, so.
We have another comment from the uh, from the floor.
So just one comment is it looks like for preliminary discussion, you put a lot of work into breaking up. The facade of the buildings to meet the design standards. Of section sixty-eight and part of that is to keep the aesthetics of the building. Um, I would suggest, from what I'm seeing, you have vacuums closer to the street than the buildings after you've put all this effort into the. Design, maybe try to have those those vacuums further back rather than obstructing the view of the front of the building. It's just.
Yeah. That that's reasonable. It sounds to make sense too, yeah.
Are there any other questions from commissioners, comments? That we. Could just. Any questions, anything left?
No, I don't think so. Joe, do we have anything else to ask?
I don't think so. I think this was a good discussion. I think um, Rick and Damian, I think you guys uh, got the feedback you were looking for, correct?
Yeah, yes, I think so.
We'll have the designers look into the the signage. Um, and I I think we have all the other bases covered. Well, you know, as we design this and. We talked to the traffic, there was some discussion of a traffic report, so was that? More of a a suggestion or is that, do you feel that would be a requirement, I guess, is one question I would have.
The question, the question is the traffic report more of a suggestion or a requirement? Of the application?
The vacuum?
No.
Oh, traffic report. I I just said that it would be highly likely that the commission would um, request one based on what was. Told to us tonight about the volume of vehicles visiting the site per day. And it's within our purview to request that. I'm not saying tonight whether whether or not it would happen. I'm just alerting you to the fact that with the. Traffic generator such as a car wash, that the commission has the authority to uh. Require a traffic study as part of the application.
Okay, so the consensus of the board that everyone would be on board with the requirement of that. The only reason why I ask is that takes some time and to put the application together, that's something that we would have to start soon. Um. You know, and we we would want to come to you with that with part of the application and not have that if that's something that you are definitely going to require.
I I would sug- I would suggest that you include that as part of your application.
Me too.
That's fair and reasonable. Thank you for that um, clarification.
Sure. Well, thank you very much and we look forward to uh, hearing from you in the future.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congested area as it is. Before going into uh, committee representative and staff reports, I had ruled early. Please, uh, the election of officers. Uh, for the new year. So we have three officer position, chair, vice chair and secretary. So we'll take them by office and uh, start with uh, chair.
I nominate Mark Calderella.
Is there, is there any uh, discussion?
The nominations be closed and unanimous ballot be cast for Mark Calderella for chairman of the zoning commission.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, sustained? Uh, for uh, vice chair, Bob? Make a nomination.
I nominate uh, Geraldine Lewis for vice chairman of the zoning commission.
We'll give it to Laura. Any any discussion?
No further nominations forthcoming. I uh, make a motion to close nominations and. Cast a unanimous ballot for Jerry Lewis as vice chairman of the zoning commission.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much. And secretary of commission.
I nominate John Henry.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I need the nominations be closed and unanimous ballot be cast for John Henry as secretary of the zoning commission. Seconded by Jerry Lewis.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, staying, passes. Five years, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to item five, committee representative and staff reports.
All right, um. Just so you're aware, we're getting a lot of requests to come and speak before the boards and commissioners. So many that I just. Recently with all we have going on, it's like wow, we're different groups want to come and speak. So I'm trying to kind of consolidate these because you're going to have a lot of business. And we have some special meetings and things that are kind of important coming up. Um, the one thing, just a few save the dates. Um, we are having a presentation at the planning commission meeting Wednesday, January fifteenth at six o'clock. As the housing task force. Um, to discuss MRDA, David Kors, who is the director of this agency is coming. To talk to the town about this. And there's some discussion potentially about housing growth zone. So since it is zoning. Um, I think it may, I mean, you can always watch it afterwards, but it may be something um, that you should. Um, consider attending or or watching in Zoom. I'll save the tapes. Uh, just so that you're, you can watch it. January fifteenth. Fifteenth at six o'clock. Six, okay.
I I will be unable to attend. I'll be away from vacation. Is that coming right here?
Right, yeah, okay, here in Zoom, so however, uh, so just so the other um. Events coming up, uh, February twenty-fourth at six o'clock. The four-shore resiliency plan, this is from the twenty-twenty-two grant. That will be um, the final presentation from a consultant. Um, I was hoping they would have a little more opportunity for public outreach, but things have been a little bit rocky with the plan and I'll leave it at that. Um, so that's February twenty-fourth at six o'clock at the middle school. Um, we are going to broadcast it if you want to kind of listen in from home as it happens, but I think it's just too much to have. A meeting at the middle school and. To Zoom in. On that. And what else do we have? Uh, Cantina Beach, that was a follow-up with sidewalks. Uh, I did go back and take a look. They are behind schedule, but I haven't gotten an encroachment permit from DOT. They had asked me for some information in September, so I sent them a follow-up, but I think at this point. It's probably an enforcement matter to go. To attorney Willis. We've been doing this since April at least. So I just wanted to get your feelings on that.
I would, I would agree with proceeding to enforcement.
Um, I just. Yes.
And and alternates are welcome to speak, so.
I wondered if they were going to work with uh, Ben Wilkins and do that whole two pieces together, but. Aside from that, I agree with enforcement.
All right, yes, um. I did send another follow-up on the old computer signs. I don't know if you've noticed. Um, I've been a little backed up on enforcement. It's now a paving company, East Coast Paving. So they don't have a special exception permit there. Um, I did touch base with Ed Casella on the Curry Clean. We do have a bond for their sidewalks. They haven't met their terms. Of their approval. Uh. The Connecticut Cancer Foundation, I did send new members. Or everyone, new members particularly who haven't read a little bit of the history. Uh, that is the judgment from the court. We gave them a little bit of time. Um, I sent a letter not knowing if they had representation, asking that they meet. The order by December fifth. They failed to do that, so that has been referred back to our attorney to proceeding court. Um. What else? East Coast Curry Clean. I'm sure that there's more, but just.
There's a boat in the uh, parking area. Uh, where's the A-one roofing, the place with the feather flags.
Oh, yeah.
It's between the building and the street in the parking area on Route one.
Oh, the did I, oh, okay, the chowder pot lobster bearings. CVA approved a giant. Five-hundred-pound lobster to Jesus, go on and. Efficient partnership to show, so it went forward. Was approved. I know that was kind of a a newsworthy one at one point. I didn't know if you heard that. Um, they're still chugging along with the Town Beach store. Which was originally proposed for three families. Now it's down to two families, so that's. Moving along, I don't know if there's anything else. I've been pretty busy. We've got the twenty-twenty-four future funds grant. Um, I already had to ask for an extension because we have to have an RFP out and a consultant in place. Um, and hired by February fifteenth with the extension, so. There's not much moving with that and the four-shore plan, um, trying to get that together with our consultant has been a challenge, so. Every Monday or every Wednesday and Friday is blocked off on my calendar for edit reviews through March. So those are just a few of the things going on. Max's place is chugging along. They're coming to your next meeting. Uh, they wanted to come tonight. I thought it would be a little bit too much. Um, they'll be coming in for their preliminary. Uh, discussion for potential text amendment, potentially, I don't know if they're going to come in with the. Potential overview of the development, um, but the text amendment, I guess, will have to deal with signage for large shopping centers and some other things. For potential text amendment. There, and what else? Anything for me?
Anything for Chris?
And if you're interested in any of the housing task force. Um. Meetings and. Have spare time, they're on the website under the planning commission, so the meetings we've had with CHAPA. Uh, lenders, builders and so forth. So if it's something of interest, uh, they are kind of archived as well as all the materials.
Okay.
Is it okay to ask a question about the uh car wash? Um, isn't that a drive-through, and isn't it subject to some of the regulations that we just put in place?
So we only regularly drive through pharmacies, restaurants, and financials and banks, okay? But it seemed like, it seemed, in my opinion, a little bit confusing. I mean, the the queue and the stack, usually we're begging for more cars, not thirty lanes of. Thirty-three lanes of thirty people waiting to pay, but it's different than.
I've yet to see one of that type, they're all relatively new in the last couple of years, um, more than two. I haven't seen one with three.
I just noticed one I buy at Home Depot, what I didn't notice about the lanes, but I would buy there on the weekend, and you know, a lot of cars. Yeah, a lot of trucks.
Over in Waterford?
Yeah, when you get off.
Right, it's a lot, we're in the highway.
Yeah. I just think it's interesting how we, you have a car wash. You know, they they can have thirty people waiting in line, and then you have a Starbucks or a, you know, some other food place where they only want to give you four, you know.
I know, yeah, one extreme or the other.
Yeah.
Like part, too much parking and not a.
Oil change too, no, just a car wash.
It is.
Yeah.
Both of them are all car washes.
I know.
Is there a?
Motion to adjourn.
But Jerry Lewis, second, just like John Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying?